So we can start our business and if he's not here then we can do the other ones. I mean, 7:30, our meeting starts. It's probably noted, so.
I don't think so.
Yep. Just tell me when you're ready? Okay. Today is February 13th and I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We usually start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you all agree.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we have some excused absences tonight. We have Alan and Al, they're gonna be excused. And I actually have a letter in our packet from Doug, who is no longer on the board, which means that there is an open position for a regular member. So I wanted, the next in the order would be you, Nate. So make a, I'll entertain a motion to have Nate come up as a regular member and it has to go to the Board of Selectmen for appointment.
I'll make the motion to appoint Nate as a full member.
Anyone second that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Why are you guys looking at me like that?
I'm not looking at you. I don't know, I didn't realize we had to have a motion. I thought it just kinda happened.
Um, not really. It kinda, I mean, our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to have Nate as a regular member, because the Board of Selectmen will actually appoint Nate.
Understood, and the Vice Chair has this authority?
I'm actually Chair tonight and I'm appointing you as Vice Chair and you as Clerk tonight. Boom, okay? There we go. Take that. All right. So we have two, with our members, we have a five-member board here. So we have two regular members who are excused absences. So our two associate members are gonna be stepping up and voting tonight as regular members, so. Okay, so the next on the agenda is acceptance of meetings from December 20th and January 9th.
Do you have the right rule?
If you want to do them separately or all together?
Yeah.
Let's do them separately because Nate was not here at one of them.
January 9th, that was not.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for December 20th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2017, Madam Chair.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, next one?
I will, just looking at the rule, Madam Chair. I will make a motion to adopt the, approve the minutes of January 9th, 2018, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Nate's not voting on that, just note that, Valerie?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm gonna go out of order because we have a continued public hearing that is gonna be continued to March 15th. So I have the application on, for 35 Meadowwood Road is requested to be continued to March 15th. They have signed a time waiver, which I have here. So if you just read that right there quickly, please?
Please be advised that I have agreed to waive the time constraints for the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals to make a decision regarding the granting of a variance special permit, comprehensive permit, 40B finding, for the property located at 35 Meadow Road, map 25 parcel 24, town of North Andover, Mass. 01845. Meeting date will be March 15th, 2018. And the name of the petitioner is Michael Consoli.
Okay. Make the motion to grant the waiver?
Motion to continue until March 15th, 2018, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Next, we're gonna do a, so we're gonna go out of order again. Give you a second to set up there. We're gonna do 197 High Street. That's Dale Street. Okay. Tony Vaughn, are you in High Street as well?
Yes, I am.
Alright, so we're just gonna give you a second to do that. So we're gonna do the 128 Dale Street then. Let you get set up all your stuff. I apologize, guys. I know, I know. Okay?
Steve Mason again for 128 Dale Street. Came back with some alternate proposal based on the last meeting. Hopefully you guys have had a chance to review it. Not sure if Mr. Weinrich can vote on this or not. I don't think so.
Is this one of your rehabilitation?
Yeah.
Alright, so just for the record, before you go, Nathan was not here, but we do have a rule that you can miss one and still be on the board and he's had signed.
Okay.
He's had signed the form, so he's all up to speed and everything, so.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for pointing that out.
Okay.
So there, I came out of the last meeting with four concerns of the board. I think I addressed them all. Hopefully I have. I've changed the side setback, front setback, addressed the tree removal and the stormwater management.
So I'm not seeing any of that?
You're not seeing any of that?
No, I just, I just have the regular, the 14 and the...
I got it.
You have the change?
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's the, the cover is this memo.
Okay.
Which looks like it's this.
Okay. The February, okay. Alright, sorry. Okay? Apologize.
No, it's okay. So previously I was requesting five and a half feet for the side setback. That is now 15.2 feet. Front setback went from 14.1 feet to 28 feet back from the front. Went, the big difference was I went to a single car garage, pushed to the back of the house, with the master bedroom extension also in back of the house, which is gonna create a, I'm gonna have to move the bulkhead to have access through the garage now into the basement. I know Mr. Manzi had some concerns about stormwater management. I forwarded, I don't know, Val, did... Yeah, so there was an email from the town engineer on the stormwater management and his recommendations. He sees no issue going...
So, just before you, is this this email that you submitted on Monday?
What's today? Was it Monday?
Today is the 13th.
No, it was last week, actually.
Last week, February 13th.
Well, Valerie is out on Fridays, so it was Friday, yeah.
But we have a rule.
Understood.
You understand. I mean, I'll accept, I mean, I understand, I'll accept this, but the plan that you submitted to Valerie, I won't accept.
The plan I submitted to Valerie?
Is that...
Was it attachment with that email?
Who is it?
Oh, oh, no, that's fine.
That was, that was his markup. That was his markup.
That was the...
That was the town engineer's suggestion on what he would like to see when it goes to planning.
So here's the reasoning why. I review my packet. If I have a packet, if I have something submitted to me, detailed, from town engineers that you're giving to me, that I need to read, I don't wanna skim through it. I wanna read it and I wanna take the time. I sit and I do my work and so do the other members of this board.
Okay.
They do their work.
I appreciate that.
So to get something like this...
I have no control over when people give me information. I apologize.
So when did you...
I wanted to get it in. And the point of it was, the extent of it was, is to say that I know Mr. Manzi had an issue with, or had a concern of whether or not planning would even hear it. And the purpose of that email was to say, yeah, there's no big problem. We can go to planning, they'll view it. He doesn't see any big concerns. So it's not a new plan. It's just a interpretation or an opinion from the town engineer.
Can you give me a minute to read this then?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I do see that you started with them on February 1st. So, well, before then, but the new questions. So they're having you do that for more of conservation? Or the mock-up with the trench?
Stormwater management.
Storm, which is part of planning?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so this is more of geared toward planning?
Right, but again, I know that Mr. Manzi had a concern about the stormwater management. I bring that forward only to say that planning doesn't really have an issue.
Okay.
So.
New roof.
Are there any questions?
Um, just looking at it.
The roof height also remains the same as it currently is, does not increase?
Did you know, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
There you go, you did. There you go. So this was the original. So it was out here, 14, so we moved it all back. So if you see the change. He had a bulkhead, so that was a concern. So he's removing the bulkhead, bringing it back and putting the addition here, changing it, changing it from 5.5 to 15.2 and then changing this. This was a concern because it was only 14 feet from the, so change it to 28. So that's that right there.
The other thing I want to point out is in the narrative that I submitted, the last page of that is satellite image of the other houses in the neighborhood and their size effects.
The last page of this, of the...
Yep, of the narrative, yep, of the memo.
I think I have it. Okay, oh.
I assume this is...
Yep. Is your house on here?
Uh, yeah, it's the one across, yeah.
It's currently showing 30 feet.
This one?
Yeah, that one, right.
Oh, okay. I was looking for the pool just to get it... Okay. There's actually a, we have an email from Lisa Schwartz. Is she here tonight or...
Uh, no, that was from last month.
Okay, this is last month, I'm sorry. It was all pulled together. I did look at everything and I must, I did, I swear to God. I always do. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions, Madam Chair. What I do have is an appreciation, and I often have verbalized this, for applicants who pay attention at the board meetings and address the various concerns, you know, not, you've already articulated them, so I'm not going to necessarily repeat them. So in, as I recall from last, last month, Al certainly was talking about the stormwater and Alan was talking about setbacks and Alan and I were aligned, I think there were a number of us that were aligned, that the five-foot setback was, was an awfully challenging number to get behind. And Alan suggested a one-car garage, as I recall, and it sounds like the applicant has, has done some work in order to collaborate essentially with the board's feedback. So I, for one, am appreciative of that effort. Am I a guy who is still, you know, still, do I remain excited about something like this? No, but this is absolutely within the windows of, of my tolerances for variances of this sort, Madam Chair. So I do not have any, any questions. I just wanted to say that out loud for, for the record.
Alrighty. Anyone else in the board have any questions, concerns? Is there anyone here who's for or against this who wants to speak? Alrighty.
You know what? This is a total double-cross on Terrence Saturday.
So, one of the things that you, that you, much, much of my questions regarding the scrub brush, the, that are, the juniper.
Yep.
The stuff that's, that's certainly a feature between the properties, that offers some, some privacy. And I am absolutely appreciative. I looked at it last time and I re-looked at it again this time, kind of after urging, because I was remembering things differently than when we were talking. And it appears, it appears to me on a, on a second look that it's not necessarily the vegetation that is offering the separation between the lots, but the, I think the more important feature is, is the topography. I mean, there's, there's probably a natural berm. I mean, there's some elevation over there. And my question to you is, is that being interfered with, chipped away at? Is there any earth going to be moved?
Yeah, so part of it will have to be excavated in order to, I think they, I think the contractor said he needs like four extra feet in order to put the footings in. So, part of it will have to be, yeah.
And then expectations is, so the contractor needs those four feet, totally understand that. Oftentimes contractors want to, contractors go with oftentimes what's expedient and oftentimes it might mean just shaving, you know, shaving the whole thing. Is this contractor's plan to just cut to those, essentially move earth for those four feet and then perhaps a retaining wall or something to hold up the berm? Or is it his intention to kind of scrape the earth at that point?
Well, so it's not my intention to scrape the earth. We didn't really get that far. I did have a discussion with my neighbor and there is, I don't know, if you say you looked at the property, you'll see that there's a stone wall.
Right.
There, and his concern was that the stone wall not be messed with.
Yep.
So, and I assured him it wouldn't be. So we need to, it's certainly gonna keep, it's already close enough that with the four feet, I don't wanna get any closer to that stone wall and disturb it at all. So, certainly not my intention to just raise everything.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Any other go-bags?
Just give him a minute, he will.
Or make a motion and he won't.
I'll entertain it. If everyone's all set and satisfied, I'll entertain a motion then.
Motion to close the public comment, Madam Chair?
Anyone second that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion, sorry.
Now there would be some deliberation ordinarily.
Ordinarily.
Ordinarily, but I thought we had deliberation prior, so.
But when the pinch hitters come in, sometimes things are... Fine, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the petition of Steve Mason for property 128 Dale Street, map 37.b parcel 0008, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district. For a variance requested under section 4.136, watershed protection division 3, uses and building requirements C, Romanet 2, 3, non-disturbance buffer zone of the zoning bylaws. Second is a variance from section 7.3, table 2, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws for one side setback left in the R1 zoning district to construct. In addition of a one-stall garage to the existing home and the side setback proposed is 15.2 feet. The required side setback per table 2 is 30 feet, so the relief variance needed is 14.8 feet. Third is a variance from section 7.3, table 2, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws for one front setback in the R1 zoning district to construct in addition of a two-stall, a one-stall garage with carport to the existing home. Front setback proposed is 28 feet. The required front setback per table 2 is 30 feet. Therefore, the relief variance needed is two feet. Accompanying that motion to approve, Madam Chair, is a handful, small handful of items. The first of which is a planned title proposed garage, 128 Dale Street, North Andover, Mass. 01845, drawn by JM Associates. It is, what's the, for Stephen Mason, 128 Dale Street, North Andover, Mass. 01845. It's job number 739594. The date is November 13th, 2017. This is sheet one of two. And there is a two of two, Madam Chair. Additionally, there is a proposed additions and renovations, Mason residence. There are three sheets, all dated January 31st, 2018, sheet one, sheet two, and sheet three. Is that it? Oh, that's what I missed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I was doing it quietly, so no one...
I'll take my medicine, Madam Chair, anytime. So I referenced the, the first set of plans as dated November 13th, 2017. And the reality in the box above is that these were revised on February 1st, 2018, as Madam Chair astutely pointed out.
Good. Does anyone second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Nope, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget to file it. And Valerie, get your decision. I'll sign it and you have to file it. Okay. Tony Vaughn. Where'd you go? Okay. So, the next on the agenda is gonna, we're gonna hear 234 Dale Street, but we're gonna open up the new public hearing so we can hear the two applications side by side. So, can you open up the variance?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. On February 13th, 2018, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition for David J. Cronin for property located at 234 Dale Street, map 064, parcel 0028, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting two variances pursuant to section 7.3 of the North Andover zoning bylaw to approve in addition to an existing structure and construction of a deck and covered porch resulting in side yard setbacks of 14.1 feet. A relief of 15.9 feet is requested and 11.4 feet, a relief of 18.6 feet is requested, where a side setback of 30 feet is required by section 7 dimensional requirements. Application supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8 to 4 PM. Tuesday from the hours of 8 AM to 5:30 PM and Friday from 8 AM to 11:30 AM.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Brian Vaughn, obviously for, for the petitioner. I was just speaking with Dave in the hallway and one of the concerns we potentially have with proceeding tonight is just the constitution of the board inasmuch as having lost Doug and having two members that were at all prior hearings on this matter. I'm not sure whether we have just four votes or whether...
It's all five of us are eligible.
Okay.
So, Ron, you heard all, all the meetings.
Yeah. I believe so, yeah.
There was no, you had no evidence in December. So you continued to January. They're both here. You were, you were here for January, right?
December.
December, so would you hit, you were December as well, weren't you?
Yes.
So you'd have to sign the same thing for, you have to read that for... So we'll just sign that now, so we'll have all five members.
Okay, so I apologize, I didn't realize, Ron, you were at the prior hearings, okay.
So you had December, Jan, you had December, you continued. You opened November. You continued December to January. So you had two meetings so far. You had one full meeting, you opened it and closed, and continued? If I remember.
I think we made that three.
No, we heard evidence in November.
I think we had three on this matter, was it three?
You don't know?
I believe it was three.
Can you check?
I was here for November and December.
You were here in November, December?
Oh, the Brazilians, yeah.
So, sorry.
I don't remember that far back.
Yeah, so that will leave you right up.
Okay.
So we will have, I mean, you know, as you know, you can miss one. So we could have Nate and Ron rehabilitate and sign that. So they've heard, they've only missed one. And if it gets continued and they miss next month, then they can't sit on it, so. But you have Al as a backup and Alan too, so, I mean, it's up to you, so.
Maybe just discuss a paper.
Okay. No, you can look. But I will need two, two more of these for them to sign for...
Does that cover everything for January? Oh. Oh, okay. Yeah, I was at November and December.
You were here in November and December.
Yep. Oh, okay. Yeah. I'm covered.
You're covered, okay. Oh, okay. It's just Ron needs to, that's Ron, okay.
So, but it was October as well, though, was?
October's how, I think, was the last one.
Right.
Did you want Valerie to go down and check?
I go check, but I remember it was my very first, so I just, that's the only thing I remember. I go check.
Okay. Just for the, just for the record?
I was here for October as well, so.
I think you just missed Jan, January, right?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. So, um, two. So we'll take a quick recess. That was Karen.
That was December, that was before our election, quote-unquote election. That was kicked over to February. According to Al, we've already done it. And I think it voted to an associate. So it's you and me, sister.
Are you still gonna go forward? You're going forward?
Yeah, as long as, as long as we, as long as we have five voting members, I just, if we only have four...
I apologize, I only thought you were, November, December. I mean, November, um, November, January. I mean, November, December, I only thought you were two.
Ah, I think.
I will tell you, 'cause I write notes.
I just remember the last one wasn't a very pleasant experience.
What did you, what did you say, Sam?
It was an unpleasant experience.
Did I cheer that, I think? So you did October? You continued to December. So you did October, December, January.
That sounds right.
Yeah, I'm looking at my notes.
Okay.
December, January. So I have October, December, January meetings.
I have October opened.
Right?
And I have them all continuing.
Continued to December. So 10-10, it was, 10-10. Opening.
Yeah, it was opened. And then I have them all continuing.
I have 12-12.
Yeah, 12-12. Remember how you told them to come back, please? 1-9 is continued.
But they, but we heard evidence in 12-12.
12-12, yes. 11-11 was continued.
11-11 was continued.
12-12, we kind of heard evidence, but then you basically said just...
Right, but it was opening up, so, right.
And then 1-9 is continued. So you were here. So, you were here.
Yeah. Correct, yep.
You did, there was only two meetings.
It was, okay.
So, we had, so, just for the record, we had a meeting in October, which was open. We had a meeting in December. And then January was continued to tonight, so there's only two meetings that we've had. And you missed December, so you'll sign, so we're all set, you're all set with five.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, I, I... We'll recall at the, at the first hearing, there were a number of issues that were raised. At the second hearing, we submitted some, some additional plans and materials, and I think there were probably more questions than answers provided at that hearing. There were some typographical errors that still weren't corrected in the plans. There were some questions that were raised that I didn't have the answer to at the time. And also, just before that meeting, I identified a concern or an issue that I had with the notice for some of the variances we were requesting. So, we agreed that I was gonna depart your company and try to put it into better, better order, come back with the answers you were looking for. And I think that I've done that now. What we did, I sat down and met with the building inspector, Inspector of Buildings, I should say, Don Belanger, and reviewed the original application with him. He had, in fact, not identified a need for side setback variances. I believe that the initial thought was that they were potentially covered under the provision regarding overhangs, but as we sat and read through it and looked at it and what was being done, he thought, in fact, that we did need side setbacks. The other issue that had happened was that the day the application was originally submitted, the, one of the pages in the application had been substituted and updated. That page actually never made it into your packages, so the variance application that we had and thought we had submitted was not the same variance application that you guys had received and were looking at. So, the net result was, we've properly noticed now and requested the additional two side setback variances. It's the same plan as was previously submitted. There hasn't been a change to what we're asking for. It's just that we've now properly noticed and opened an additional hearing for the side setback variances. I think, um... So, one of the other issues, I guess, that, that was raised at the last hearing was with respect to the gross floor area variance, which was the one that was previously opened, and whether or not we needed to seek a separate variance that we had not requested. I did also review this with, with Don Belanger, and I think, as it relates to the, to that variance, we, in fact, did not, we had, we had applied for what we needed. We only needed the variance for the additional expansion of square footage beyond the 50 percent threshold. The, the issue or distinction was the variance that was suggested that we may need is only with respect to a new structure in the watershed. Because this is an expansion of an existing structure, we, we don't need a variance for a new, a new structure in the watershed.
Who determined that? You, or?
Don Belanger, my discussion with Don.
Okay, so you had a discussion, and what, would, did he reference part of the bylaw that says so?
Sure. So, 4.136... 3... C2... 7. That is the variance that we're looking for, which is more than 50 percent. The variance that was, was raised as to whether or not we needed it was 3C23, which says construction of a new permanent structure only after variance has been granted by the zoning Board of Appeals. But because this is not a new permanent structure, and instead is the expansion of an existing structure, we fall squarely within C27 and not C23.
So, your existing structure is less than 2,500 square feet, what's your existing structure?
Well, the existing structure is, yes, it's less than 2,500 square feet.
What is it?
It is... 1558.
And I think I saw in there that you have town sewer, right?
Correct, the property is on sewer.
There's some of you that, because sometimes they get a little tricky here with their wording. They do their "and/or" stuff in here.
Yep.
So... So, that's part of your special permit, you're going with that part of your special permit.
Right, Section 7 is, is, we're seeking the variance from Section 7 because we're seeking expansion of greater than 50 percent. If, if we were seeking less than, than 50 percent, we wouldn't need the variance. And we also wouldn't need the Section 2, 3 variance because it's, it would be expansion of an existing structure. It wouldn't be a new permanent structure. So, so that the watershed variance is strictly related to the size of the expansion being more than 50 percent of existing gross floor area for a building that's less than 2,500 square, square feet.
What's the addition, how many square feet? I know he has it on here.
It is, uh...
It's a total of... Don't make me do math.
The total proposed is 2483.
So, our existing... It's 1558 proposed. It's 2483. How big's that lot?
The, um...
What is it? Yeah. So, why don't you just summarize what you need from us? So, you have two applications in front of us. So, you have the special permit of, to allow for the over 50 feet in the watershed.
Right, over 50 percent.
Oh, I'm sorry, not, over 50 percent.
So, so then, the, um... The other relief we're looking for is side setback variances. And if, um... If we look at the, the variance plan... There's a side setback to the right side of the property, where it's currently pre-existing non-conforming at a 13.4-foot setback. The expansion that's being proposed is kind of a garrison overhang on the second floor only. So, it would be going from 13.4-feet setback to an 11.4-foot setback, so we'd be increasing the setback by two feet. But again, it's noted, it's strictly on the, on the second floor. The basement of the structure isn't changing. On the opposite side of the house, there's an existing 23.9-foot setback, where the, you know, the setback's 30, so we're also there, I mean, there's, what we've requested is a 14.1-foot setback on the left side. I'd note that that is the setback to the corner of the rear deck, which is proposed. As far as the actual structure itself, it would be 19.7 feet. That, and that is the, the overhang on the left-hand side of the porch. Because you recall that, that on the left-hand side of the porch, it's proposed to be a covered porch. So, the actual building or structure itself would only be expanding by a two-foot overhang on the right side, and then by approximately four feet on the left side. In terms of living space, it's also only two feet on the second floor of an overhang, but then it's also the covered porch. However, the variance is for 14.1 feet, because we were also seeking a variance for a rear deck in the back. And I think, you know, the other thing I would point out with respect to the side yard setbacks is, obviously, you know, it's, it's a long, narrow lot, and it's, it's kind of difficult to build modern living space and to try to get the number of bedrooms that are necessary to accommodate his now-growing family without just those couple of extra square feet of, of living space. The, the, so the, the home itself wouldn't really be intruding much further into the setbacks. The property to the, to the left, as well as the property to the right, you can both, you can see both properties actually have pre-existing non-conforming setbacks as well. One of them shows a 14-foot setback, and the other one shows a 15-foot setback. And, you know, so I think, you know, it is admittedly a, a small lot, but I don't, I don't think it's really an excessively large expansion of, of the building. I think, you know, it is a very, a very small bungalow-style house now.
So, are you requesting any conservation relief as well? Are you, you're within the buffer, the, okay.
Yeah, we're within...
Do you want to approach any of that? So, we're, you're requesting the special permit, and you're requesting, requesting the side, in two side setbacks from 30 to 11.41 and 30 to 14.1.
Yes, that, I mean, with...
In a sentence.
Right, with, with...
In a sentence.
But, but with the, with the understanding that, you know, it is, again, a pre-existing...
Correct.
Non-conforming.
I, I just, because there was a lot of information submitted, I just wanted to summarize it, just so you know it there. Does anyone on, on the board have any questions regarding this? Lot of information here.
I don't know why you gotta be looking at me, Madam Chair.
Because you have mock-up, if I had red pen over there.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm admittedly still wrapped around the axle in, you know, the section, Section 7, the 50 percent kind of thing. I think the bylaw doesn't appear to be crystal clear to me. And I, and I think I appreciate the conclusion that Attorney Vaughn and the building inspector have come to. I'm just not able to kind of replicate it, you know, in, in my head. So, when you, when, you're kind of asking me, what am I, what am I doing over here, Paul? It's just kind of trying to reconcile that, is all.
Right, our bylaw, there's many places in our bylaw that's conflicting. And this happens to be one of them, so...
So, I wasn't asking for an answer. I wasn't asking for you to solve my problem, Madam Chair.
No, I wasn't, I was just reinstating what's by...
I was just processing, I just wanted you to hear me.
I hear you, I hear you, Paul.
Yeah, I, I feel your pain. I've always thought that this particular section of the bylaw was, at best, very difficult to understand.
Right, and if they, like I said, if they throw "and/or" in there, you're like, which, which I, and/or what. So, it's very hard to determine, and I think, you know, the inspector of buildings determined it in his interpretation, so it's us, for us to decide as well, so... Does anyone on, on the board, anyone else have any questions, circumscribe?
More of a question, I'm just looking at the proposed uncovered porch, which is kind of what brings the setback on the left 14 feet instead of, I guess what currently is, is 19, 19.7?
Yeah, it, it would be 19.7 without the, the uncovered porch. And the difference, you can see on the left is where it says proposed covered porch.
Covered or uncovered?
Covered, if, so, to the rear of the house, it says proposed uncovered porch. To the left side, it says proposed covered porch, which wraps around the front. That's actually a lot easier to, to get your arms around if you look at the, the architectural drawings. I think that is perhaps helpful. If you look at, I think it's Sheet A2. It's kind of a, it's, it's looking at, at, at the proposed second floor plan, but you can imagine, you get a good perspective of what you're looking at down from up above. And you can see the, the covered porch area along the, the front and side. You can see the shingles, and then you can see the, the deck to the rear.
So, it's more like a farmer's porch?
Yes.
The uncovered porch.
Right.
Which is the piece that kind of takes your variance from 19.7 to 14.1. So, I guess I'm just curious why it wasn't...
Ron, look at A4, A4 would be a good, it shows you a whole, the side.
Yeah.
And will show you the cupboard and the porch in here in a little, little more detail.
Yeah.
So... But, I mean, you want, if you want to direct a question to the board?
Yeah, just a question is, does it have to be as wide as it is, the uncovered area?
Well, I, I think, um, in terms of width, I think it's, it's really, probably because it naturally carries the line of the front side with the covered porch down along the, the length... length of it. You know, I, I do, I guess, hear a concern about looking for a more extensive setback variance there than perhaps is needed. You know, the, the deck probably isn't a critical piece to, to the project, but it is a very nice backyard. It's a backyard in, in the watershed that probably you're not going to have much other use of. It slopes off and it does provide for, you know, a nice scenic view. And I think, at least typically or traditionally, when we're looking at, at setbacks for, for decks as opposed to setbacks for the structure itself, it's, it is still kind of open space. It's generally less imposing upon.
So how big's the deck? What's the size of the deck?
Yes.
25 by? 18? What's that?
Yeah, so it appears to be 21, looks like it's about 25.
18? 15? Guessing?
Yeah. Guessing, I'd say, looks like it's about 20, 25 by 20 or 18. I mean, I, you know, I suppose you've also got, got the stairs that extend out as well. So I, I'd say with the stairs, it probably looks like it's about 25 by 20, just a guess.
So to Ron's point, if you lessen that 20 by 20, I'd, you know, 25 by 15, then your variance in your back would be on a five, you know, 10 feet instead of 15 type. Is, is that what you're getting at? I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, just from what you hear is that it's, you could shrink it to the left a bit and increase the size of the setback you have. The question I was asking was, was there a reason it was done at the size it was?
No, I, I think the reason, and I can check with Dave, but I think the reason was just to try to maximize the, the use of, of, of the yard for scenic view purposes because also, you know, the, the structure itself still is, you know, though we're looking for a variance for a larger structure than is allowed, the restriction on, on our ability to build is, is somewhat artificial in as much as it's, it's driven by the watershed. And this just provides almost an additional living space area type thing in the summer months for, you know, recreating or just, I think all you really have here for backyard is a view and that enables you to maximize it. I don't think, I don't think that the, the rear deck is the, the driver on this. And if it's the difference between having approval or not, I suspect we could easily shrink the deck. One of the things we are cognizant about, however, is that whatever, whatever we do because we're in the, in the watershed, it's, you know, it's, it's not a situation where we can just say, oh, well, we'll just do this without the deck and add the deck later because that becomes yet another watershed special permit. So, you know, we're, speaking for my client, I think he'd be more than happy to reduce the size of the deck if that were a driver to a decision on this.
I, I have no problem with the size of the deck. I mean, I have a large deck and when you have to replace it, it's very expensive, just to let you know, so. And I don't use it. It's pretty, so.
The proposed setback is in keeping with the two adjacent houses, so.
Yeah. Yep. And I guess one other point on, on that too is, is, you know, the, the deck lines are following the, the structure, which is what you would typically have. And you have a, a property line which narrows out in a pie. So the further back you get, obviously, the further you're gonna cause a setback violation there.
Anyone else on the board have any questions, comments, or concerns?
So, the only other thing that's probably worth noting was, at the first hearing, I think there were lots of questions that were raised by various board members, some who are not here tonight, about the watershed special permit plan versus the variance plan, drainage issues. At the subsequent hearing, we did provide some stormwater calculations and proposed to install a underground detention chamber. Then when we presented that to you, and, and the reason we did that wasn't because we, we wanted to, we would have preferred to, to kind of deal with those issues with the planning board and see what the planning board wanted because they tend to be the ones that look more at, at the impact on the watershed versus, at least as this bylaw is kind of set forth, you, this board is really looking more at the ability to undertake the construction or, you know, the, the dimensional requirements. So, you know, we're, we're more than happy to do it. We prefer not to. We would prefer not to impose it as, as a condition. But if drainage were an issue that this board was concerned about, we do have the plans. We have provided the plans and.
So here's the thing, you're gonna have to provide the planning and it's gonna have to get approved.
Right.
So for me, it's not a driving force in a variance or a special permit. It, it makes a difference, yes, and it, it's part of my decision as well. But if there was a condition set forth that after the planning board, you submitted to the, to the zoning board for a packet, I mean, I would be okay with something like that. I don't know about anyone else on the board, but I would have no problem with something like that. A condition imposed that submittal of drainage plans be submitted after planning.
And, and I'd be more than happy to do that. My concern has just been not wanting to, not wanting to, to do something with respect to watershed issue, which we, we think is trying to satisfy you guys. But when we get to the planning board, maybe they.
They might change it.
Don't want it or want us to do something else.
Correct. They probably will. They'll want it.
Yeah. I'm, I'm expecting they, they might, but I would, you know, our preference at least would be if you were inclined to approve it, to approve it without that condition, perhaps with a condition that we would resubmit whatever they did approve for you or, you know, but rather than, than say that it's approved subject to definitely doing this in accordance with this plan, I would prefer to have the flexibility to let the planning board tell us what they want us to do.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss it as a board as well. Is there anyone who wants you to speak for this or against this tonight? Or are you guys all here for High Street? High Street? Okay. So. Wish I'd known. Yeah. Did you want to add anything else? No, you're good?
If anyone has any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I mean, I, I guess, I think I've said it before and I just would reiterate this, you know, you did mention it, it's a small lot. And yes, it is a small lot, but in terms of, in terms of the size of the building that we're, we're looking to add, it, it really is not substantial or imposing in, in any way, in my opinion. I think it's a real, aesthetically, a real improvement over what's there. The neighbors were at the first hearing, you'll recall, and, and they spoke in favor of it. I think that this section of the bylaw, at, at the time that it was prepared, it was, it was really anti-development for purposes of protection of the watershed, but it was really, at a time when there were a lot more septic systems and it was really concerned with effluent. And we don't have, we don't have that issue here. I think there are a lot of, you know, by virtue of, of subjecting, right, right now it's not subject to a watershed special permit because it was pre-existing. By subjecting it to the watershed special permit, we're actually going to, you know, improve protections for the watershed because then it will be subject to deeded restrictions when we get through that process, such as with respect to, to nitrates and what we can use for fertilizers.
Hi, people are going off. All right. So, Valerie, I, we're gonna have to have Ron sign that before we, so if you have another one, we can just do that, just to have that, that portion out of the way. So.
Look, I'm the guy, I've spent most of this hearing, again, being wrapped around the axle on some stuff primarily, no matter what the board decides, public comment gets closed, there's deliberations, then there's a motion. I'm the guy who needs to make the motion in, in the affirmative, just for the gallery and the record. That's just the way the board works. And I think I'm gonna need an awful lot of help actually, kind of putting together what the, you know, we've got, we've got two different hearings, we've got some new submissions, perhaps some changed dimensions. So if, if you could, before we close public comment, work with me. I think I am looking at the first notice and it sounds like circumstances have certainly
Thank you.
So I'm, I think we're looking at the same thing. This is the October 10th hearing date. The applicant is requesting two variances. I think that we're, we've whittled that down, if I'm not mistaken. So can you help me construct?
Right. Which shouldn't, shouldn't be a, a problem because overnotice isn't a problem as, as long as you notice the variance you're, you're looking for. So the first one being a variance pursuant to 4.1363C23 for construction of, of an addition, technically, that's not needed. What's needed is pursuant to section 4.1363C2C for the addition with gross floor area over 50 percent.
Okay. So then, in, in making a motion, I will be striking the, the variance pursuant to the first one, construction of a second-story addition. Correct?
You could, you could say a variant, a variance for construction of a second-story addition and the variance pursuant to section 4.13C for gross floor average, area, if you wanted. I'm, you know, I'm just, it's, the actual variance is for the gross floor areas, but is, is still with respect to the construction of, of a second-story addition. It's just the, the section C23 is the variance for a new structure. And this isn't a new structure, it's an expansion of an existing structure.
So in dress rehearsal here, so the applicant, applicant is requesting a variant, the way that I would be, I, I'm concepting it, is that the applicant is requesting just a variance pursuant to section 4.136.3. Is there a reason to be reading the, you know, the 12 words before that? Is there a reason to read a variance pursuant to section 4.136.3.1C.2.3 watershed district for construction of a second-story addition? There is, it's my understanding, we don't need a variance, so therefore we're not asking for variance and we're not going to be approving that, that variance. So item number one in our list, it's my intention to strike unless I'm hearing from you a, a need. Okay. So in, in, when, when, if and or when the moment comes that we'll be making that motion, the, the plan in support is the most recent variance plan dated January 14th, 2018.
Correct.
So can we just go back to, so you're original with the, for a variance, you've never applied for a special permit, have you?
No. We, we have to, in this case, we need the variance before we can apply for.
Special permit is through, through, through the planning board?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
I just don't want to see you, Ben.
Right.
So the variance played, the variance plan dated January 2018 is a, is a document in support. Are we doing anything with, maybe I should be asking Madam Chair this, are we doing anything with the watershed special permit plan or is that, was that an informational purposes only kind of plan?
I would prefer that it were for informational purposes only. However, if in your deliberations, you, you know, have board members that are, are concerned with any of, of the drainage issues or the, the detention system and it's, it's there for, for your option if you were to impose a condition. Again, we, we would prefer that it wasn't referenced, that it was for informational purposes only. If you wanted to impose a condition that we would, that later submit whatever was a final approved plan or, or something like that, and weren't happy to, but we would prefer that that were not a condition.
Okay.
So we, we, and we've, I think I'm done with that one.
And not to impede your progress, but also you probably will want to make reference to the architectural plan.
Which is the, that's, that's.
And that's the same one for both.
That's the new stuff. Unless I'm hearing you say that what is submitted for this quote-unquote new hearing, the February 13th hearing regarding setbacks, is it your suggestion that the architectural plans be referenced in the first?
Yeah, so.
Or am I making one motion for both of these? I think I need to be making two motions.
Yeah. You could, you could do it either way, to the extent you've opened the hearings and heard them in a consolidated manner. And.
I would prefer to.
You've, two, two motions, yeah.
Two motions, yes.
We've got two notices.
Two motions.
Yeah, I mean, I think from, from our standpoint, it's kind of like we can't have one with, without the other anyway. They're kind of mutually dependent.
Understood on that one. There can't be yes on one and no on another. Doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right.
So I'm just going to revisit for the, for the sake of clarity and before I get into the, into the recitations and Madam Chair astutely but gently corrects me.
Guide you, not correct.
I think. That's polite. I will leave the. I will leave the, maybe I'll, I'll ask you, Madam Chair, what, what do you think should be the pleasure of the board? That the architecturals be referenced in the, the GFA variance?
Why don't we reference him in both?
In both, she says. Thanks a lot, Madam Chair.
Just because one complements the other, like you said.
Just because you wanna hurt me, Madam Chair.
Are you satisfied with your?
I think I am satisfied with my organization and direction.
Gentle direction. Did anyone else in the board have any other questions or concerns? No one's here speaking for or against? So motion to close.
Motion to close, motion to close public comment, Madam Chair.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, some deliberation.
I don't have any deliberation.
Neither do I. I've got nothing.
Gentlemen?
I'll entertain a motion then.
Aye. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of David J. Cronin for property located at 234 Dale Street, MAP 064.0, parcel 0013 North Endover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district for a variance pursuant to section 4.136.3(c)(2)(3) for gross floor average. GFA allowed 50%, requested 68.9%. Variance of 18.9% in the R1 zoning district. And so for that, Madam Chair, is a variance plan titled, a variance plan located in North Endover, Massachusetts, prepared for David Cronin, 234 Dale Street, North Endover, Mass. 01845. The date of that plan is January 14th, 2018. That's not a new one. Also there are a handful of architecturals. Madam Chair, there's a zoning variance permit set dated September 12th, 2017 for an addition to the Corona residence, 234 Dale Street, North Endover, Mass. 01845. There is a cover, an X, X0, X1, X2, X3, X, oh, and then A0, A1, A2, A3, and A4 for now. A5, A6. I think that satisfies the architectural, it's not nearly as lengthy as I thought.
So are A5 and A6 the same as the two plans and the variance in here?
The architectural should be the same plan set.
These are A5 and A6.
A5. Yep.
Furthermore, Madam Chair, as the board discussed, there is a condition that the applicant submit drainage and/or watershed plans once finalized subsequent to the planning board and or, is there a concom element to this? Or is it your planning board? Subsequent to the planning board deliberations and approvals.
Did you also reference the, I've heard for these, the watershed special permit?
The, for informational purposes only plan, Madam Chair? How'd you like me to reference that in the motion? That the board, the board has received a watershed special permit plan for 234 Dale Street, North Endover, Mass., prepared for David Cronin, 234 Dale Street, North Endover, Mass. 01845, date of which is 7/27/2017, revised 9/4/17, submitted for informational purposes only?
Correct, and to be updated by planning when they submit it. What you, what you condition, put this in potty condition? Or whatever you want.
As part of the condition, the drainage and watershed plan subsequent to the planning board approvals, including but not limited to said watershed special permit plan. Valerie's got it, Madam Chair.
You got that? Okay. Does anyone wanna second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Hey, do it again.
I would love to, Madam Chair.
You could just, you don't have to reference everything again, just reference as prior meeting, you just do.
Now you're into shortcuts all of a sudden.
No, I wouldn't.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of David J. Cronin for property located 234 Dale Street, MAP 064.0, parcel 0028. That's different from the 0013 and the first one. I think they're both supposed to be 0028. North Endover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district. These are for two variances pursuant to section 7.3 of the North Endover zoning bylaw to approve in addition to an existing structure and construction of a deck and covered porch resulting in side yard setbacks of 14.1 feet, a relief of 15.9 feet is requested, and 11.4 feet, a relief of 18.6 is requested, where a side setback of 30 feet is required by section seven dimensional requirements. For that, Madam Chair, it's the, fine, it's the same list of exhibits as the prior motion, Madam Chair. Do you want the same, shall we, and the same conditions as the prior?
Correct.
Madam Chair.
All right, and just note that if you referenced the other map, I thought you had crossed it out and corrected it.
I announced, I announced 0013, but it should be 0028. The parcel number on the first motion.
Okay. Okay, anyone second that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You all set on that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, last one here is High Street. I apologize, I didn't know you guys were all here for High Street. I would have done it for you. Good luck.
Okay, so, ready to go?
Yeah.
I guess, again, as in, as an initial matter, this was previously opened. I think this one, we've only actually had one hearing at, and we've continued every time since then.
Correct.
And we're going to be seeking a continuance again tonight. The reason being that this, this had been held up with the demolition delay for the historic structure. Filing had been submitted. My client really is the buyer, didn't want to invest too much time and effort until they got past that, that hurdle. I have not yet seen a decision, but I did get a voicemail. Apparently it was approved by Historic Commission last night, maybe? At least this is what I heard by, by way of voicemail. So my client's intent is then to proceed with a redesign, hopefully to try to address some of the, the issues that the board had raised at the initial hearing. I know at the initial hearing, you'll recall, it was the same night as the cell tower, and it was really late. And I, I know a lot of people were cut off. I know we've continued last minute a few times, and, and again, that wasn't intentional. The reason was because the Historic Commission meetings have coincided with the night before the zoning board hearings. So it, although I, I didn't submit any new plans to you at this juncture, that's the reason why. I think that I don't have anything further to present, but there's a lot of people that obviously have come out, and there were a lot of people that kind of got shut off at the mic or didn't have a chance to speak at the initial hearing. You know, I'm, I'm more than happy to listen to further abutter comments so that we can try to come back next meeting with the, the best plan that we can put forth for the lot to, to address their issues.
And make sure you come back with the decision from historical?
Right.
So what was it that they deemed it?
My understanding was, so it's, it's subject to a demolition delay? And that they waived the delay so that a demolition permit can issue without, without the delay.
So just for the record, a demolition delay is a year and a month if it's deemed historical. So it's up to the Historical Committee to, they could either waive it. So we'll find out for sure once we get something written from them.
And I, I only prefaced my, my comments with, because, you know, I, I also haven't seen anything. I wasn't at the hearing.
Okay.
I just had, I just had a voicemail. And the marching words I received at like noon today was that the homeowner apparently was successful last night and that they are gonna proceed and wanted an extension. And we're gonna hope to, to try to address some of the issues that, you know, they, they did speak to a few abutters, I think, following the first hearing.
So it's important for them to continue on speaking to the abutters because this is their neighborhood. And so what we'll do is have you guys, you came here, you'll have some, something to say. And if you could take it back to the applicant when they do their design and keep all, keep that in mind when, when you're planning a design, so.
And, and I would also, I guess, just say, I mean, I, I also appreciate that maybe for some of the abutters, it's, it's, and they're now gonna be commenting on something that was originally submitted, which potentially is, is already subject to, to change. Everyone.
So you, you have nothing, no plans in front of us? We don't know if it's gonna be a one-family or a two?
Well, no, we, we do know that we're looking for a, a two-family, just because that's the, that's the only reason we're even.
So you're gonna demolish that, what's existing there? Just to let you know that what's gonna happen is gonna be demolished. The existing home is gonna be demolished and a two-family home is gonna be replaced. The designs are unclear at this point, so.
Correct.
Just for summary. I like to summarize things. So right now we'll take some, yep, and just state your name and address for the record, just so.
Well, what, I'm gonna read the statement.
Okay.
It's just easier for me.
Just you, you name an address too first, thank you.
I'm Jill Barker. My husband Christopher and I live at 181 High Street. We live in a house that was built in the 1840s. Both Chris and I have been to the last two zoning board meetings to voice our opposition to the proposed Jeffco development at 197 High Street, but have not yet had the opportunity to speak to the board. So we appreciate that tonight. There is one house between our property and 197 High Street. Our initial concern was about the proposed raising of the antique structures on this property. The raising itself would significantly impact and permanently alter the character and nature of the neighborhood and its streetscape. From all outward appearances, this property has not been maintained for 20 to 25 years. Now the owner's solution to this dereliction of responsibilities as a property owner is to raise the antique buildings that they have allowed to deteriorate badly and then to sell to a contractor to build a new structure in its place, a two-family residential structure replacing a single-family structure on the lot size intended for a single-family structure. All this has been noted in our 121117 letter to the town's Historic Commission, which I have, had then forwarded in an email to the heads of the zoning board prior to the last meeting. Well, now it would seem that our current and most imperative concern regards the new construction at 197 High Street site proposed by Jeffco Incorporated, which intends on building a duplicate of its construction, which is presently at 250-252 Sutton Street. We are opposed to the building of such an immense four-story, two-family residence on the lot at 197 High Street. This proposed building is an enormous oversized construction, particularly as it incorporates lower subbuilding garages. The height alone of this proposed building greatly exceeds any structure on High Street. Not only would it be totally incongruous with its neighbors, there's even one house across the street which is a one-story dwelling, but it is completely incompatible with the streetscape in general, never mind being totally incompatible with the historic elements of this particular neighborhood. It also appears to be too large a design for the narrow frontage of this single-family site. To say that it would be completely inharmonious with its surroundings is a great understatement. It not only impacts the nature of the neighborhood, but it impacts the privacy of its neighbors and their quality of light or environment. And it will cast a significant shadow. The proposed four-story, two-family Jeffco construction at 197 High Street is definitely not an appropriate plan for the single-family sized cottage lot at that address and should be denied any permits to allow it to be built as such. We respectfully request that the zoning board denies the petition of permits that would allow the proposed Jeffco building plan to be implemented. Of course, this is all prior to the statement just made, but that's what we have to say. And I thank you very much for letting us say it.
Thank you.
If, if you could, Ms. Barker, would you, I, I think I heard you say something that you emailed something to the board members?
We did. That was to the Historic Commission, it was a copy sent to the.
Okay. Not, not to the zoning board?
No, it was a copy sent to the zoning board, but it was to the Historic Commission. That was concerning primarily the raising of the structures.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I need to be clear. Did you send something to the zoning board members or did you send something to the zoning board?
The two heads of, what I thought were the heads of the zoning.
Okay, would you kindly send it to the, to Valerie? If anything, sent directly to the members doesn't become a matter, a matter of public record. And to the extent that I, I could have been a recipient, I ignore them frankly. So to get, get them to us, please send everything through Valerie. Okay. Thanks.
And what is the email that was, I'd be sincerely?
It's actually on, yeah, it's on the website, you can go on the website, you heard Valerie, okay. Okay, anyone else? Oh, someone's gonna beat you.
That's okay.
Go ahead, come on, hurry up, beat him.
Hi there. My name's Amy Sullivan. I'm the director abutter to the right of this property at 189 High Street. And again, this is all based on before what you just said. First off, I'd like to take, thank the board for taking the time to listen to my concerns. I know your job is not an easy one, but hopefully you will listen to what I have to say in making the right decision for our neighborhood. I would like to start by saying I am not opposed to a two-family house, but what I do oppose is the current design. This isn't a historic neighborhood, district, but is, doesn't fit the historic style of this neighborhood. The major concern I have is the height of the project. In the warmer months, my family and I like to sit on the back deck. If this project is built, sitting in our yard, we'd now have a deck about 15 feet taller than us, looking right down upon us, just a few feet away. I think the entire board would agree that if they lived there, they would not want that either. I can't imagine enjoying our patio yard and letting my son play, all the while constantly feel like I'm being watched. I would prefer a two-family with the style of a unit in front or in a unit in back with a driveway on the right, or something without a garage underneath. I also ask that the board not allow a finished third floor. I ask that he go back to the drawing board and find something that is more appropriate to the character of this neighborhood. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Barker, and I live at 180 High, 181 High Street with my wife Jill. Just as a matter of protocol, am I allowed to ask questions of you or am I only allowed to?
Procedure, because we have, we don't have a plan in front of us, so it's hard to, to have an applicant, you know, discuss the plan because we don't have it in front of.
There may not be a question about the plan.
If it's procedural, yes.
Okay. So I'm not sure whether any of you have looked at what was the proposed building that's located at 250-252 Sutton Street? And I guess that's a question I have.
Right, it's not in front of us, so he's gonna come back with the design, a new design.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, the reason I ask that is because I think for any casual observer, if they were to take a look at the structure on Sutton Street, which was what was being proposed for High Street, and then they also look at the dwellings on High Street, they would easily recognize that there's a total mismatch in terms of size. And I've taken some photos for comparative purposes, and I don't know whether that's something that would be helpful or not, from the same distance so that somebody can see that it's totally.
I think once we get a new design, I think that'll be helpful once a new design is in place. So once they come back with that, that'd be great. So if you wanna resubmit that then and when you get that. Because we're hoping that the applicant takes into all your concerns and comes back with the design that you're happy with. This is what is the purpose there, there, he's your voice and your concern, so he can go back and design something that will fit within your neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say it for you.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you want Nate to read that for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
If you just state your name and address up there for the, and Nate will be happy to read it for you, sorry. You're welcome.
My name is Sharon Reynolds. I live at 182 High Street with my husband Tony Reynolds, taught at the high school for 33 years. I did send this letter to the zoning board in December.
Oh, okay.
And of course, we've had many meetings since, and I wanna present it and have somebody read it. It might be a little dated.
Thank you. So those are to the chairman, zoning board and members from Tony and Sharon Reynolds, 182 High Street, North Andover. We live at 182 High Street, North Andover for 47 years. We are located across the street from the proposed property. 197 High Street has been a single-family home for 150 years and with a very narrow lot. Several of the houses near 197 were workers' homes from the Davidson-Ferber factory. It should remain as a single-family home as not to destroy the look of the other older homes. The traffic problem. High Street is an extremely busy street. Everyone who works in the machine shop village uses this street. They leave Interstate 495 and go up Sutton Street and down High Street. Many, many trucks and vehicles. A two-family building that is four stories high with two garages would be facing us. We have a hard time now backing out of our driveway. A two-family and possibly four to six cars, it would be nearly impossible. Having two to three cars in a single-family home would be better as it is now. For years, we had yellow lines on the street. Not now. Plus, many years ago, we also had white fog lines. Not now. Consequently, people park on the sidewalk and you can't even walk downtown unless you walk in the busy street. Third concern is the safety of the residents. Last week at the planning board meeting, the chair mentioned that High Street needed a traffic study by the DPW and the police. The planning board is looking at building 54 apartments at 21 High Street in the East Mill, maybe needing 300 parking spaces. Now, where are these owners gonna travel? Where would the access be? On what street? That's it.
So we'll submit that to our committee.
My name is Sharon Laporte. My husband David and I own the property at 58 Brightwood Ave., which is directly behind 197 High Street. I appreciate.
I think I have your husband's.
My husband's, yes. That was from November. I appreciate that they are willing to redesign this, but if you'll permit me for future planning to state. So we are directly behind, so our two backyards face each other. My husband addressed the board at the first meeting back in November, and you have a copy of his objection. When he addressed you, our biggest objection was that of a two-family dwelling as opposed to a single-family dwelling being built. Although that does remain an objection for us, we now have an even greater one. Since that meeting, we have had the opportunity to drive by 250-252 Sutton Street to view what was the proposed model for this lot. When we saw the height of this home, it was shocking to us. This structure with the garage underneath is basically four stories. You have the garage and the first floor, second floor, and the attic with dormers could easily be a finished level. As my husband stated, we spend most of the year in our backyard. We often enjoy quiet dinners there on nice evenings from spring through fall. In addition, we have an in-ground pool and we entertain family and friends often. If approval is granted for this particular structure or any structure of this height, our current view would be greatly altered, but more importantly, our level of privacy would be virtually eliminated. I've brought pictures taken from our backyard. I believe Valerie gave you copies. What you see on the ground is the snow-covered pool cover of our in-ground pool. Thank you, Valerie. The vegetation on the fence, which looks dead in these pictures, greens up every year, creating a lush tropical-looking privacy fence in front of the chain-link fence that encloses the yard. You will see the current structure at 197 High Street and the barn behind it in these pictures. Now, if you visualize all of that dead-looking growth as thick green vegetation, you will see that we have total privacy. There are no windows in the back of the barn and the only, there is only one small window on the house which is visible, which you can see. But once that greenery fills in in the spring, we cannot see that window. And if we cannot see it, then those inside the house cannot see us. If you visualize the proposed structure, the original proposed structure on that lot with the height it will be, you will see that anyone from the first floor up would be looking directly down into our backyard, where currently there are no windows looking down into our backyard. We do remain opposed to the building of a two-family dwelling. However, should you vote to grant approval for a two-family dwelling, we implore you to consider the impact that the specifications of this proposed structure or a structure of similar height in the future would have on our property value, the view we have enjoyed for 22 years, and most importantly, our level of privacy. We respectfully request that you will deny a variance of a structure for this height. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Jody Black and I live at 202 High Street, so I'm across the street from this proposed structure. I just wanna say that a lot of studies, there's been numerous studies that show that market values remain high and continue to remain high in historic districts and historic neighborhoods. And something like what was proposed kinda sets a precedence that we're gonna lose the character of the neighborhood and potentially lose property values in the long run. We are opposed to a two-family residence there. There's numerous examples of a single-family residences with compatible and scalable additions on our houses, as we do, that could work well with a new, a new single-family home. If two, if a double-family is granted, we would just want it to be in more character of the neighborhood. So, we'll see what the plans are. Thank you.
My name is Rich Fattalo. I'm at 198 High Street, right across the street from the proposed raising and, I guess, construction site. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir.
Brian Vaughn.
Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn. I have a couple rhetorical questions, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, you just wanna ask them for me, so.
Which is fine. You had mentioned that you got a voicemail last night that it was okay to raise the property from the historical society, is that correct?
You wanna ask them for me? We're not, that's not interfect, please actually continue it. We're not gonna take a voicemail, so we'll wait for.
Okay, 'cause I wanted to see if there was any sort of public record, we could cut that up just to verify.
Nope, I'm gonna wait till I actually have the official.
Okay. Now, for the redesigning of the property, what dimensions are you, are you still looking to expand the property from your original proposition or are you looking to scale it back based upon everybody's concerns on the height? Because I know a structure of that size is going to overshadow the entire neighborhood that's already there, my house, our neighbors' houses, the abutters, unnecessarily. When I look at a two-family house for that lot, it's already a two-floor structure. Why can't they just have the same lot with one family on the bottom, one on the top? I don't understand why it needs to be such a monolithic creation. So I'm curious as to what planning designs you have in store to account for that.
So we will see that as well. So when you see it, when we see it, you'll see it. So, again, in front of us is there's no designs because the applicant is gonna resubmit something and hopefully take into all your considerations about the height, the character, the two-family versus single-family, and come back with the design that fits the neighborhood. So, once we see something, then we'll have a more definite.
And you had stated earlier that it's gonna take, what, a year and a half or could take a few?
No, no, no.
Well, I must have missed that. I misunderstood.
So if it's deemed that it was historical, they'd have to wait a year to demolish it. But apparently, according to the voicemail, which is hearsay, which, I mean, again, I don't have anything in front of me, so I can't be for 100% certain that they decided to waiver that, demolish the demo permit, and so they gave them a waiver to demolish the property. So they can, they can start building once they get a variance or whenever.
When should there be answers as to?
We're gonna, our next meeting is March 15th. March 15? 13?
March 15.
March 15, okay. So the second Tuesday of March. So hopefully, we'll have something and you can actually, it's usually a week and a half before our meeting, Valerie, we'll have something down in the zoning, downstairs that you can look at prior.
All right.
I would just say, not to address that, an individual directly, I'll address you, Ellen, it's, again, it was, you know, I apologize, I was actually out of the country last week and I just returned yesterday, so it was simply exchanging a voicemail. And when my client left me the message, he actually had heard from the broker, so, you know, the devil is always in the details. My understanding from a message I received was that my client was informed that it was waived and that they were going to proceed with revising some plans to address concerns. And my purpose and goal is to get as much input from all of the people that are here just so that I can at least relay to my client what the neighborhood's issues, concerns are. I'm not the builder, the developer. I can make suggestions to my client that based upon what I'm hearing, you know, the issues we wanna look at are height, massing, garage, access, you know, just historical issues in general. What ultimately my client decides to do in terms of submitting to this, to this board is gonna be their decision, and it's gonna be based on a lot of different factors. One of the ones that usually comes into play is, is the balance between the costs of what they're doing, because obviously, you know, they're, they're paying a certain price for the property and they're trying to do this to make some money. They're clearly not gonna, you know, build, build something which is unfeasible economically. But at the same time, they, they do want, as best they can, to address the concerns of the neighborhood. Ideally, they'll be able to come back with a design which people will be happy about. I mean, that's what I would like to see, that's what they would like to see. Inevitably, my experience is that you can't make everyone happy, but hopefully, we can, we can address as many concerns of many of you as we can. So I do, you know, appreciate what I'm hearing from everyone. I will relay all of it to my client and then what, what they're able to address or not address is really their, their business decision. But I will try to get everything submitted well in advance of the next hearing. If people wanted to give me email addresses or something, I could also, to the extent I have anything I submit to the board, I'm more than happy to, to copy abutters on. We're not, you know, we wanna try to make as many of you as happy as we can. I live in town, I would like to see something consistent with the neighborhood here as well.
So is there anyone else here who had any other concerns? Because I, I think the theme here is more character as well, character of the neighborhood and, you know, the size. I mean, I think it's hard to go look at Sutton Street and then imagine that there. You know, conceptually, just seeing that, like, oh, so, I mean, the concerns of the neighbors who are here, we have to live with it every day, hopefully Jeffco would take into consideration, so.
Yeah, I would take it a step further, Madam Chair. It sounds like Attorney Vaughn has a willingness to interact with the, with the community. And rather than the community coming up to the phone and making declarations for what they think are the issues, it sounds like a conversation between Attorney Vaughn and the abutters, the folks that have questions, concerns, comments, that kind of thing, is something that I would certainly encourage Attorney Vaughn, and I, he generally has a willingness to do that. I just wanna make that clear to the gallery, that Attorney Vaughn is absolutely an approachable player in this action and is more than willing to listen. He has heard this stuff before, he has worked with developers before. I have a sneaking suspicion that there can be a constructive conversation between everybody. Does that mean that the abutters are going to get everything that they need? General speaking, the answer to that is, you know, no. I can kinda save everybody some suspense on that one. But at the same time, what I'd like to offer the board, the same way that Attorney Vaughn and his client, well, Attorney Vaughn's client, and needs to balance the needs of the community and then the economic viability of the project, the board sits up here and balances the, you know, the prospective benefits and the prospective costs to the neighborhood. There's a wide discretion here. We listen to the various comments of the gallery. We absolutely listen to a developer who is looking to improve a dilapidated property, however, that property has become dilapidated. So there is more process and there is more opportunity for input, and I would encourage everybody to give your email address to Attorney Vaughn, have a conversation with Attorney Vaughn. I may even ask if you give him your email address, I think that when, if Attorney Vaughn can get the piece of paper from the, from the historical commission regarding demolition, I'm sure he'd be happy to circulate it so that everybody has certainty rather than just kinda relying on, well, I heard this, I might have heard that. The piece of paper, as an attorney, is the most valuable thing in my book, and I'm certainly be happy to share if he gets it.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I can't make any promises as to what my client brings forth. I have a number of different clients, they're all different, they all have different styles and different willingness to do things, and every project is different as well based on the economics of it. But the one thing that I, I can at least do is try to facilitate open communication. I, I am more than happy to share by email with anyone, at the same time, anything that I'm sharing with this board. When I file something, I'm more than happy to copy everyone else. It's public record at that point, it's just more convenient for you, give you a chance to, to look at it without having to run back and forth and call Valerie constantly to find out if anything new has come, has come in. So, you know, we wanna, we wanna try to work with you all as best we can. That doesn't mean that I'm necessarily always gonna have news that's gonna make you all happy, but, you know, we'll, we'll try.
Your concerns?
I just have one last question.
Okay.
Hypothetically, if this gets denied to build a two-family there, what's Jeffco's proposal for that property?
Don't know.
I mean, is it gonna stay a dilapidated building or are they gonna take the property over?
Don't know, it's up to the applicant to decide that, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, my answer would probably be the same as Ellen's in as much as, again, I'm, I'm not Jeffco. The situation right now is that they're, they have the, they don't own the property, they have it under agreement, their agreement to purchase it is gonna be contingent upon them getting the approvals. The economic viability of this property based on what the seller needs to get for it, to get out from under it, and then what needs to be done, my guess, and again, this isn't for my client, but my guess is that there probably wouldn't be a project without a two-family for Jeffco. If that were the case, I don't know, I don't know whether, you know, there's another buyer that comes along that's willing to do something, but. that comes along that's, that's willing to do something, but I just would imagine that it probably would be in the, in the same dilapidated condition as you called it.
Yeah, thank you. So...
Can I ask a good question about the process?
Sure.
So as the board is probably aware, several of us, this has been our third meeting. And because the attorney didn't really come with any new information tonight, what we had to say doesn't have a whole lot of bearing because they're not putting in that building. So what I want to understand, they're not putting in the original design. So what I want to understand is to what extent can we expect that there might not be a whole lot of new information presented by them, but we have to come to make sure that we're representing our interests as opposed to it being sort of an efficient process?
I, I'm not quite sure what you're asking, but I think Attorney Vaughn was willing to submit you plans, by email as well, which would be in a PDF, I'm assuming, the plan that you can just open up and see prior to the meeting and give you, I mean, when we receive it, which is usually a week and a half prior to the meeting.
But Mr. Vaughn gets that to me that's way before that.
Oh, yeah, so you'll see it.
But he'd always come down to, right downstairs, say that he can show it to you if you ever want to stop by.
If you want to see the big, huge, yeah, the plans and see it more visual, a bit more visual, but Attorney Vaughn said he was willing to email it to you as well.
Okay.
I was, I was hearing the question a little bit differently. You have no guarantees. This hearing could go on for any number of months in the future. So my suggestion would be to, you know, plan for the worst and hope for the best, which is that there is, there is a motion at the next month and the month after that, and perhaps it comes to conclusion.
So there's no onus on the developer and his representative to...
It's his application to drive however he or she sees fit. Same thing is true if you ever make an application before this board, it will be up to you to drive the application.
Okay. Thank you for explaining the situation.
Certainly.
So at this point, I think we're gonna have a motion to continue High Street.
Motion to continue, Madam Chair, to March 15th or 13th, or 13th or 15th?
Second Tuesday. Is it 15? The second Tuesday of March. Yeah. All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we just have a couple of other things on the agenda. So there's miscellaneous board elections, which are gonna be tabled until next month, until, until further notice. There's two letters in here from Community Housing and Chappaletta dated January 22nd. So motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
A second.
All set. We just gotta sign Myla's?
Yes.
Myla's signed? Do we have to sign Myla's? Okay.